Then I call this workshop of the Kingman City Council to order on May 7th, 2020, at 9:00 a.m. And I, because this is a workshop for our budget sessions, I will turn this over to Manager Foggan.
Thank you very much, Mayor. Welcome back, everybody. It feels like we were just together like all week.
A lot.
This is awesome. Appreciate everybody's time. Don't expect this to take a whole awful lot of time, as we covered a lot of material yesterday. Appreciate the input and comments. And just as a reminder, I want to just let everybody know that as we cover the material, if you have questions, please, please, please unmute and ask your questions or make your comments. They're welcome, more than welcome. We want to make sure that everybody's comfortable with the information. So that still remains an ask from me. And if we're ready, where we left off yesterday was the golf course. So we'll pick up the operating budget conversation at the golf course, page 45 of the PowerPoint. And we'll start by saying that they've made cuts to their 21 budget that reflect a 9.4% decrease from 2000. They have a need to reclassify a couple of their positions, those, the folks that are serving in those positions of taking on additional responsibilities. And it would be appropriate to reclass them. They're doing actually an absolutely great job out at the golf course. It has been beautiful. And if you haven't had a chance to see it, I would encourage you to do so. It's had a lot of play over the last month. And they've kept it really beautiful. The comments that we've received have been outstanding. And our customer service there continues to be great as well. It does, we do have a groundskeeper position that will be unfunded for 21. As we talked about yesterday, this, this is a sacrifice for the, for the course. They feel like they can keep up for another year, but we'll need that for 2022. Their supplies and services, they've cut back on merchandising. The merchandise that they have traditionally golf course, golf course clubhouse has carried clubs and golf accessories over the, over the last few years with online purchasing. Golf courses have seen a decrease in purchases that way. So our inventory, what we're experiencing will be much less, which is a cost savings. We have reduced fertilizer to reflect more of what our practice has been in the past. But that, we can get away with that as long as, as the grass keeps looking great. But there may be a point in the future, hopefully not this year, but 2022, where that actually needs to be increased as well. And then the internal services, as I pointed out yesterday, the internal services affect all the departments. So you'll see that line and the explanation in, in that line for all the departments. Under parks, parks is also seeing 7.4% decrease from 20. They have reclassification issues, just as the golf course did. Same idea of they've shifted job assignments around, asking folks to do a little bit more and take on some more responsibility. So this budget reflects that. There are also going to go without a position. Again, they need that position, but they felt like they could get through 21 without it. Supplies and services are down. Really, it's due to the fact that our, our parks master plan will, will be finalizing in the next few months. And so they will, of course, not need that in their professional and technical line item. And then they, for capital outlay, they are decreasing that because they've made their purchases for 20 and will not have any vehicle replacements for the 22 or 21 fiscal year.
Manager Foggan?
Yes, Mayor.
With respect to the position that we're not filling now, does all of this factor in the fact that we are going to have to be putting so much additional staff time into disinfecting equipment and bathrooms in the coming year? I don't see that stopping anytime soon.
Yeah, we're, so Mike and his team are committed to continuing the sanitizing process that we've been involved with, restrooms, playgrounds, picnic tables, public surfaces that are touched a lot. We're doing that, we're currently doing that, we'll continue to do that. And we're doing that without that position now. So we feel like we can keep up with that extra assignment without that position. Obviously, the one thing, the one piece of our operation that we're really, really missing is the inmate help. And there's no, you know, there's no indication, or at least we haven't seen anything recently that has said that we're going to get the inmates back in, in their, in helping our public works and our parks departments anytime soon. But we will be able to keep up with the sanitizing, yes.
And Manager Foggan, we have no timeline at this point for opening equipment, playground equipment, or splash pad, or anything of that nature. Is that right?
That's correct. Yeah, there's been no notification or indication of when that will happen for public pools, splash pads, or the park amenities, other than restrooms.
Thank you.
Yep. All right, Police Department. So the Police Department, their recommended budget reflects a 15.3% decrease, just as I explained with the Fire Department. We're holding back until the end of the fiscal year, the PSPRS payment. And so if you factor in the, the payment that we're going to make at the end of the year, their, their decrease is actually 9.7%. They do have some personnel costs. There's some reclassification of administrative assistant, assistant position. They are also looking at an intelligence analyst position that, that, that position is, is really needed out at Magnet. And that, that position's actually paid for through the Magnet program. And then a, a big portion, of course, we've talked about this earlier in the presentation, that PSPRS rates have increased just over 6% for, for the police officers, police personnel. So that, that's, that's kind of a big hit, as it always is, or has been, at least for the last number of years. As far as internal services, there's a decrease for the insurance. And they have that one-time unfunded liability payment that I just covered. And then on capital outlay, they actually have a large decrease due to the fact that they're participating in the capital lease program. And that, that this year, they're moving fully to the five-year capital lease, which is, again, as I said yesterday, in hindsight, was a beautiful decision because it helps take our cash and move it, spread it out over time. So not, not much to report, really, it's, it doesn't vary widely from 2000, other than those few spots.
Manager Foggan?
Yes, ma'am.
I was curious how many officer positions are still unfilled. And I wanted to make sure, I know in other departments, we're talking about not filling, that if there are officer positions, we are actually going to keep trying to fill those.
We're actively filling our officer positions, I believe. I, I don't have that data right in front of me, but I believe there's three open positions. Chief Cooper, are you participating today?
Yes, City Manager.
Do you, could you answer that question?
We currently have four open positions. We have several in background and we're anticipating, we're hoping we can fill in this next go around. We also have testing scheduled for the next couple of months as well.
Yep. Thank you, Chief.
Good. Four is much better than where we were last year. And then my other question was just with the changes, where those positions were eliminated and we were changing the pay. Has that been able, has that increase in starting salary and pay helped us fill those other positions that were open?
As a matter of fact, it has. And one of the things that we, that we were having a problem with in the past was that we were unable to attract, the way our pay scale and compression was, was hitting the department, we were not able to attract outside officers that were working for other agencies to, to look at our positions. And that has changed. We've had more interest in existing officers in other departments or other jurisdictions actually showing interest in our positions.
That's, that's really good. Okay, I'm glad to hear all of that. The, my last question is, the conversation for years, even from before I was elected, was the problem with hiring, training, and then losing those officers and the cost that's involved initially, that investment in that new officer. And then, and then basically, you're just training somebody to go to a different, whether it's DPS, or, or a different city in the county. We were training people just to have them go to a different agency. So are we still seeing that? Or has that improved as well, that officer retention?
Well, we have, over the last couple of years, we have lost a couple officers to the state. They have a pay range that we, we certainly can't compete with. And, you know, we've, I, I would say that the department has worked hard on recruitment. They've worked hard on at least encouraging and having a workplace that their, that their officers and their, their, their team can be happy in. And working with this compression factor, I would say that, that we're competitive within our region. We feel like we're a great place to work and can't say that we haven't lost officers. But I, I, you know, in talking with the Police Department, we feel like we're positioned as well as we possibly can to be competitive in, in our area. And frankly, if an officer wants to go and work somewhere in Maricopa County, or Las Vegas, in the Las Vegas area, we're just simply not going to compete with that. But I, I know the department's committed to, to the, to our team and to keeping our officers. And part of that is just making it a place that people enjoy working. Because a lot of times, it's more than just the pay. I mean, we know that pay's important, but we, we recognize that it's, it's a combination of things, greater than just pay.
Okay, thank you so much.
Yeah. All right. Public Works Administration. Public Works Administration is, of course, we're, we're switching now over to talking about our, our operations for our water sewer, drainage, streets, you know, the, those kind of things. So they are, they have a reduction somewhat within their, I'll just say that they're at least with 20, with a little bit less than that. The recommended budget reflects no really significant changes from, from fiscal year 20. So not, not much to report for the Public Works Administration. There is some to report in streets. We've talked about this much earlier yesterday. The streets' budget reflects a 14.6% decrease. The personnel costs reflect an equipment operator that will go unfunded for 21. Again, talking with Jack and Rob regarding his position, they felt like they could go through this next fiscal year without it, without that position. But we'll absolutely need to have it in 22. As far as the services and supplies, they're going to carry over that $650,000 that we talked about yesterday in pavement preservation. And we'll be able to do a few projects. But as, as we talked about yesterday, it really doesn't add up to, to doing very much work, at least not, you know, that's a tenth of what we, we really need to be doing. So and then there was a few minor realignments on fuel, electricity, you know, what, what we've been budgeting versus what we're actually spending, which is always, you know, that's always a good thing. The internal services decrease, we've talked about, we'll cover that. And then capital outlay decrease, you know, the elimination of the pavement preservation. Just, you know, it, it's not a happy time for that, but it's, it's necessary until we can get to that point where we're talking about some direct increase funding for pavement preservation. We've also cut out the traffic signal detection camera spending that those, you know, remember, we've done a couple of those projects over the last couple of years. They've worked really, really well. But just in the feeling that, you know, if we're not going to be able to work on streets, then spending money on, on the cameras, I don't think that, that we can do that as well. And then, of course, we are utilizing the five-year capital lease program for a vehicle. So that's, that's really street operations. Like I said, it's, it's not what we were planning, the conversation we were planning on having this year, but that's what we find ourselves in today.
Manager Foggan, this is Vice Mayor. I got a question. Let's see, it's related to the fleet vehicles, the, the contracts for the leasing of the vehicles that you keep mentioning?
Yes.
Is the city, are we transitioning to leasing only one make a vehicle? Ford or, or things like that?
You mean, like, all, all Fords or all Chevys?
Yeah.
I, I don't believe that there's been a, a policy that said that we were going to just buy all Fords or all Chevys. That has been a move that's, I know that some fleet departments in other jurisdictions have, have made. You know, that I think in Coconino County, for instance, they, they buy only Chevys or, you know, they don't buy only Fords. But we, we have not just said that we will, we will only have one brand or the other.
Sure. Who does the maintenance on the, on these leased vehicles? Is it, is it staff?
So the, the way that, the way that the program's designed is that hopefully there's no, there, other than oil changes, there'll be, there won't be too much maintenance on them, because they'll be brandy new. But Rob, did you want to, did you want to add, add to that?
Yes, sir. Jack's here. He can talk a little bit about that.
Yeah, go ahead, Jack.
So on the, on the fleet vehicles, on two sides, we, we are trying to standardize as much as we can. Obviously, it's difficult to do that completely across the board. And then on the leased vehicles, they have an option where you can have maintenance done outside. It adds into the lease payment. But we evaluated the cost on that and felt that it'd be much cheaper for us to do it in-house. And as, as Manager Foggan mentioned, the maintenance should be a lot less because it should be just some oil changes, maybe tires and a set of brakes, if we're actually fully utilizing the program before we get rid of those units.
Thank you for that information, Jack. Reason I asked is, is just to also save costs on, on training for our technicians and also on any parts or inventory that the city would need to maintain to take care of the leased vehicles. Thank you very much.
Yep. Great question, Vice Mayor. And that's one thing that we're actually pretty excited about this program. And that is reducing our, the parts, or the need for parts over time, which is, which has eaten up a lot of, a lot of the fleet budget. So it's a great question. So, any other questions on streets?
Yeah, I have a few questions.
Okay.
My first question is about this vacant equipment operator position.
Yeah.
I know firsthand how important that position is. And every time, you know, we get any kind of rain, significant rain here, or like when we had our snowstorm, the people in the equipment are so important to come out and clean up our streets because we have such major flood issues all over town. And so I'm wondering if we aren't putting ourselves in a bad spot when those times come, or if other departments have equipment operators that we could borrow to come and do those cleanups?
So that, that's exactly what's happening. We've actually been trying to fill this position for, for a while. And, and that's one of the reasons why we felt like we, we could go without it for one more year, is it has, it has been open for a few months. But the, the beauty really has been that we have folks that can go across departments and help out in emergencies, or in, in times where, where we need extra equipment operators. Parks have been really good about helping out when needed for the public works and vice versa. I know that we've, we've been able to help out the airport when they've needed help. So yeah, our cross-training and coordination between the departments allow us to, to be able to rise to the occasion. And again, I'm not, I'm, I'm going to tell you right now, we need the position. But for the way we've been operating and the coordination, we can, we can make this work for another year.
Okay. And then my other question, the big question is, this is your recommended budget, and people are watching. And so I would like to get your explanation for recommending a tenth of what we need for pavement preservation. I know the answer, but I just want you to explain that to people. Why, why aren't we shutting down, say, the golf course, or cutting every department, you know, so that there is $10 million to fix the roads? Because that is a priority for our citizens.
Right.
Why can't we do it? Or why isn't it being recommended?
Okay, sure, absolutely. So the fix the roads, $10 million is basically one year of, of many years. So what you, what we end up with is decreasing livability for all of our citizens to repair one part of what people expect to be part of the community they live in. So, yeah, we, we could absolutely cut parks, we could cut golf courses, we could cut, we'd cut back on purchases of, and capital projects, other capital projects. But when we do a budget, we do it, I will call it an all-budget approach, where we, we have to look at livability. If, if we funnel all of this money to one, to one effort, then we, we end up dropping services that citizens expect in all the other areas. And it, it has a downward effect on, on whether people want to live here. Hitting, no one wants to hit potholes, but no one wants to live in a community without parks and, and, and the livability aspect. And really, our, the fix that needs to happen with streets is ongoing. So we could cut, we could cut a whole bunch of capital projects, we could cut services, and we could do some road projects. But what do we cut? Or how do we get those services back the next year when we were spending them? Again, we would have to spend them all on streets again. So there, we just do not have a funding source that, that is going to keep up with street maintenance. And so that's, you know, in what we look at when we do a budget, is we look at the overall livability of the community and try to balance out what, where that money goes. The amount of money, for instance, if you cut the golf course, golf, of course, the golf course makes revenue for itself, it is supplemented. But let's, let's just say that it was supplemented by $500,000. You need $7 million to fix roads this year. You would be only adding $500,000 to that deficit. And you would end up not really making a dent. So in budgeting, we try to present a budget that, that reflects what we feel the citizens in the council have identified as priorities across the board. And one of those is livability. And so that's, that's how we, that's how we present this budget as a balanced budget. And, and streets are a part of, a part of that.
And the solution, the funding solution is?
So the funding solution is that we're, we're going to continue to work, it's, I'll say it's more than two-pronged. One of the things that we're going to continue to work on is we're going to continue to try to push the state and our federal folks to do something with the, what is known as the gas tax. It hasn't changed since 1992. Certainly hasn't can, even, they haven't even attempted to keep up with inflation. So there's, so there is some state and federal policies for funding that still need to be pursued. We are still going to be at the table talking to those, the Rural Transportation Group, which we're a part of, we've been an active part of. We're going to continue to be a voice there. Directly what the city is planning on doing, what, I guess what we were planning on doing this year was asking the City Council to put a gas, a gas, not a gas, a sales, a portion of a sales tax increase on the ballot for November, to generate some specific, larger amount of money to streets maintenance. Because we find ourselves in this pandemic and economic downturn, a pretty severe economic downturn, we are not asking the council to consider that for this year. But based on the rebound and a recovery from this pandemic, more than likely, we will be asking for some kind of percentage increase to sales tax for 2022.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Yep, absolutely.
Manager Foggan?
Yes, Mayor.
You know, another aspect of our capital projects is important. And that is, that it's often, the capital projects address really significant needs of the city. Sometimes they're associated with water and wastewater. And, and those just cannot be stopped. You have to address some of these. And also infrastructure that builds our future and our job creation potential.
Yeah.
So the, and they're often in partnership. Some of them are deeply dependent on partnerships or grants, or a lot of things that the city is engaged in all the time. But you, you can't just rip that out and say, okay, that, that doesn't, that doesn't just translate over here, because it's really a, a complex situation that, that the city is dealing with for specific projects. So I think that's an important part of it, too.
Yeah, yeah, you're absolutely right. It, it, there are just projects that just absolutely have, they have to happen. So, all right.
Manager Foggan, I would just follow up on those comments to say that this last, well, this legislative session before everything got shut down, I actually went down and testified in the House Transportation Committee for Kingman, just to talk about the lack of pavement preservation funding that we had, the, the problems that we have, the maintenance backlog that we have. I was there with several representatives from I was there with several, um, representatives from cities and counties across the state. The HERF problem and, you know, redoing the formula. Wide-ranging statewide problem or the, we're, we're one of hundreds of cities that are facing it in this, in the state. Everybody's got a maintenance backlog. But the real, the real solution has to come locally. We have to, we have to save ourselves. We have to help ourselves. So I really do hope that, um, the citizens support, uh, a dedicated sales tax in a couple of years. To take care of our roads.
Totally agreed. And, you know, again, you know, uh, one of the reasons why we highlighted. Those pieces from the citizen survey earlier in the presentation was to, to show that people. Are recognizing the need to take care of our roads. That, when we got the, when we received the survey results back, that, that's, that was good news. In, in that what we were working towards for November 20. And that was asking the citizens to increase sales tax to take care of roads. You know, when you have 90% of the folks, you know, 400 people who took your written survey. Acknowledge, 90% of them acknowledged that roads need to be, um, taken care of. That, that's, that is a good indicator that people are seeing the problem and want to help fix it. Um, and so it, again, it was disappointing to, to have to, to make that recommendation. And we're certainly, you're right. I think there, it is going to be a, a local problem, a local issue. It happens to be a local issue for all of our cities, or at least all of the cities I know about in Arizona. So we're not unique in that. Uh, but it is definitely, it becomes our responsibility to help ourselves out of that hole.
Well, it's very frustrating to me personally, uh, because we had this already for almost a year. And then you had Engel and Swanee and Delmonico and these people. Rail against it, the 413 passed. And the frustrating thing is that they haven't been to one meeting, one budget meeting, one budget workshop. To help be a part of the solution after that. So if they're watching, you know, they need to step up.
All right, thank you. All right. Transit. So the transit budget, um, is got probably one of the larger decreases, uh, in it. The, the transit budget reflects a 36.4% decrease. There is supplies and services decrease. We're, we're just, uh, in the process of wrapping up. A very, uh, needed, very large, uh, transit study. And so that is, is coming out, uh, will not, obviously not be in the 21 budget. Uh, that accounts for a, a big portion of, of what's happening in their budget. Also. The transit operating budget reflects a 1.6% decrease. They've had some turnover. Some, some of their longer-term, uh, employees have. Or, or leaving or have left. Uh, so that results in a little bit less. Salaries, uh, and then, uh, capital outlay. We've, we had, uh, as part of 21 originally expected to ask for a, a new bus. In talking with Rob and Sherry, um, we do have some grant money that will help pay. A portion of that. And, um, we've reached out and asked if we could have that grant applied to 22. And, uh, received, uh, confirmation that, that we can actually do that bus purchase in 22 instead. Which we're grateful for. And so that's helped us save some money in transit. Their. Uh, budget looks like this. And one of the things, I don't know how many of you have seen this. One of the things that has, has been nice, we haven't been direct recipients of really too much of the CARES Act. Money, a little bit, you know, we received some at the airport. One of the other places where we've gotten. Or will be receiving money directly is for the transit. So I don't know how many of you know this, but for the last, uh, couple of months. We've been providing bus service, um, that has been at no cost. And the, the, when the CARES Act was passed, they actually had, um, provided money to pay for those, uh, for those rides. So, uh, we didn't lose, uh, any revenue for our transit system. And, uh, for the next, it looks like for the next couple of months, that will continue anyway. So, uh, a little bit of good news for transit anyway. And we will get, um, we will get a new bus in 22. The transit study is something, when it's finalized, of course, we'll be talking with the council about. And, and planning and having a stronger transit system moving forward is obviously something. That I think will be beneficial to, to our community.
Ron, this is Vice Mayor.
Yes, sir.
What's the timeline on the completion of that feasibility study?
Rob, can you, do you know what the expected timeframe is on it?
Uh, we'll be bringing that to council in the near future, possibly the next meeting. Um, I believe it has a 12-month, uh, timeframe, but I can verify that. We'll have that information for you when it comes for the award.
Uh, a couple of things about that. I know one of the things that, that I'm actually most interested in. Is they were going to be looking at establishing a route that covers our industrial park. That's, that's a huge need. We have to have transit out to our industrial park. We have to figure out how to do that. And so I'm interested in seeing what the report says about that. Something else I'd like to note. I'd like to see, uh, has, has the county, uh, agreed to contribute to the yellow route? The yellow route right now of our, of our car system. Goes really far into the county territory. In the New Kingman Butler area, uh, out by the airport on the other side of 66. Uh, and I want to know if they're, have agreed to contribute. Cause if they haven't agreed to contribute. The way that, you know, financial times are these days, we need to look at changing the yellow route. If the county is not going to contribute financially to the yellow route. The yellow route could be a route that we reroute into the industrial park if the county doesn't contribute. So has the county contributed?
No.
There you go. I mean. So I, I hope that's, that's noted. And, uh, if they don't, if they continue not to contribute. We need to change the yellow route and maybe reroute it back into our industrial park. Those are my thoughts.
Okay. I'm sure we will discuss it at, when we have the transit study.
Yes, sir. And the, the route analysis is included in the scope of work for the transit study. Uh, along with, uh, other revenue sources, which would include, uh, participation from Hobbie County.
Other questions about transit? Okay. To be continued. All right, water operations. So as I pointed out yesterday, our enterprise funds, water sewer, um, solid waste. They, um, they operate as small businesses. They have their own, uh, revenue sources. And, uh, there is a slight decrease in water operations, 2.9%. The really, the, the decrease is that they have made a little bit of a change. In what they're wanting for, or needing for capital equipment. And, uh, one of the things, um, that's really going to help them is a trailer-mounted, uh, back, uh, unit. This is much less expensive than, uh, as you can imagine, a hydro back truck. Will run about, uh, anywhere from 275 to $325,000. So, uh, one on a mounted one where they can get into smaller spaces. And move it around in tight areas is, um, is really going to be advantageous to them. Additionally, they are going to participate also in that five-year capital program. Under sewer wastewater, uh, there's, the budget reflects a 5.2% decrease. Theirs are related to capital outlays. They had, uh, a, a carryover of a dump truck purchased from 20. And then, um, they're of course participating in the, the lease program as well.
Ron, I got a quick question, if I could. This is Vice Mayor. On the water, uh, will the adoption of the One Water Framework be coming to council this month?
The One Water Framework will be in June, actually. All the committees and task force back operational this month, which we're, we're putting back together. With virtual meetings, uh, the, the One Water, uh, framework has been discussed. By and, and by our water, um, resource task force. Water Sustainability Task Force, sorry. And, uh, it was supposed to be voted on in March, but without a meeting. They've not finalized it. So we plan on having them vote on it and make that recommendation. Their recommendation to council in June.
That's perfect. Uh, and then the other information I'd like to have, if you could refresh my memory. I know for, for wastewater, um. Underneath that One Water Framework, where, where the city is taking on a philosophy of, of, um, water recharge, water sustainability, water resiliency. And I know that stormwater infiltration and inflow mitigation are priorities. When is the city planning on adopting a stormwater, some sort of a stormwater fee? To help pay for recharge projects for anybody that would benefit downstream?
Yeah, so, um, as I mentioned yesterday in the highlights, we are going through that drainage master plan. Study right now. Our plan was to have that, what we will still make that presentation. To the council with recommendations for, for rates for stormwater. But we're not anticipating asking to start stormwater fees until fiscal year 22.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, solid waste. Uh, just as a reminder for everybody, we, we will be covering the solid waste. Rate study at the May 19th, uh, council meeting. Uh, so stay tuned for that. We, in the highlights, we've covered most, most of this information. So I'm not going to spend a lot of time on it. It, uh, the solid waste has 11.4% decrease. Personnel costs are, we, there's a reduction there. As, as we're holding off on recycling program and the market conditions continue to be. If they weren't bad before, they're, they're super bad now. So there's some cost, uh, savings with, with cutting back. Yeah, on that program. Uh, supplies and services. Again, tied to our recycling program. And then on capital outlay, there is an increase. We, we've been needing for a while, um, a skid steer. And which, uh, has been kind of desperately needed. And so we did, um, let that, um, into the budget. And then, um. There, you know, ultimately, as we talked about, uh, earlier in the presentation. The starting of a solid waste, replacing our solid waste trucks. Right now, we, we, three or four in behind the shop. So that when one breaks down, we have another one to roll out. It's just, you know, it's costing us thousands of dollars to keep these. These vehicles on the road. And, and so that program moving forward will absolutely need to be done. To continue to maintain this and provide this service. So that's solid waste budget.
Ron, this is Vice Mayor Lingfelter. I have one question about the study we're going to see this month. Some of the, the information's going to be presented. Are you going to present, um. Almost like a chart, uh, that shows the, with the customer's monthly fee would be. A comparison of what the customer's monthly fee would be between the available private providers. And if the city of Kingman continues service, what the, what an average consumer would, would pay every month under each one of the scenarios?
So no, we're not going to be able to do that because when we reached out to try to, um. Get some estimates of what, uh, private haulers would, would think that would cost. Of course, they weren't forthcoming with any information. So what we'll have is, we will have. Kind of what other communities are, are paying, uh, that have private haulers. It's not, it's clearly not an apples-to-apples comparison. But until we go, uh, through some kind of, uh, official RFP or RFQ process. The, no private hauler will be willing to share any rate service or rate information with us.
Okay, I understand that. Would, uh, is the data from Bullhead City and Lake Heavisue City both going to be?
Yep.
Included in that analysis, what they're paying and what they're, they're paying? Okay.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Yeah, you betcha.
Ron?
Yes.
Okay, I just want to go on the record and say that I hate that we are cutting recycling. But I, I understand why. And I believe I read earlier, it's a $300,000 savings.
Yes, ma'am.
So. This is painful and I'm against it, but I get it. And I just want to, I just want to say that I hope. You know, down the road, we will look for, um, a more modern approach to recycling. Whether that's composting or bringing back recycling of the products like glass and aluminum. And those kind of things that we will at least, you know, do something. And then we'll, we'll maybe do it a little bit better than we did before.
Yeah, uh, you know, I, I couldn't agree more. And I've had, I've had curbside recycling. In the last two communities I've lived in. So I'm, I'm extra spoiled with, with that. It, um, and you, you have my commitment that we will continue to, to look as, as we budget. And as we look at operations, that, that we will look for those opportunities, for sure.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Manager Foggan?
Yes, Mayor.
I, I echo that. I've had a lot of requests about, uh, when, when is the recycling program going to start again? And, and, but I totally understand why we cannot do it at this time. But going back to the, uh, waste, the solid waste, uh, comparisons between cities.
Yes.
One of the things I would be interested in discussing when we discuss that topic is, uh, timelines. When we have these rates, of course, it's a point in time that's being gathered. But, you know, I, I'd like to know if it's associated with a, a, uh, perm of service. Like, is this a rate that they've had for several years and it's guaranteed for several years?
Okay.
That kind of, um, you know, there, there's always a period of time where it might be attractive, but then it could change.
Yeah.
So I'd like to have that integrated into discussion. Thank you.
Great point. Yeah, someone made a deal. I, I know exactly what you're saying. So someone made a deal for, for three years. And on year four, the rates double or something. Yep, I totally get it. Absolutely.
Ron, most of your, uh, public contracts, uh, would be structured that way. Where you would have a fixed price for a certain term. And then they would have to come to you with price increases or something to justify any sort of a modification to the price.
Yeah, I've managed a couple of different, uh, contracts with private waste haulers. One was through franchise and one was through straight-up contract.
Alright. Uh, on the recycling point, have you and your staff considered, uh, possibly putting out some sort of a request? For information to the private sector to see what sort of opportunities there might be. To be innovative with recycling, maybe entertaining some sort of a public-private partnership. Where we would have a privatized recycling program that they would be responsible for. They are to fund, they have to roll out in partnership with us. they have to roll out in partnership with us at zero cost, pretty obviously. Is that a possibility?
Everything's a possibility. Recycling companies are too busy going out of business to talk to. It's, it's, it's one of those things that we're open to any and all ideas for recycling. It, just the markets dump, even before this downturn, the market had dumped and it's even worse now. So, I mean, moving forward, if we hear or there's any inkling that recycling is on the rebound, it would certainly be something we'd be willing to look at.
That's great news. I think it's never a bad idea to issue a request for information to the private sector when you're a public agency, just to stay on top of all the trends, to find out what's really going on. It's a wonderful and a free way to tap the knowledge base of the private sector. And I'd love to see us use it more. Thank you.
You betcha. Good, good, good comments. Anything else on solid waste? Okay, fleet services. Indirectly, we've been talking about fleet services through this whole presentation. They, they're, we're transitioning more to what a lot of people understand fleet services does for organizations, and that is really manage the vehicles, all of the vehicles. So their, their current budget reflects a 3% decrease. They've, they've had a little bit of turnover. They're hiring new people at lower rates, so that results in the savings. They are seeing a decrease in supplies and services from what we've talked about with the need for fleet parts and tires decreasing with kind of getting rid of older vehicles, which is, I think that's, that's really great news. The one, the one piece that absolutely on a safety issue is that needs to happen in the fleet is that the garage door, the garage doors just absolutely have to be replaced. They're heavy. Having one come down on a vehicle or a person is just too dangerous. So that is, that is, it's kind of a big ticket item. We recognize that, but at the same time, these doors are used a lot and have not been replaced for a long time. So that's kind of the fleet services budget. Again, we're transitioning more to what I would say is a traditional fleet service where they are managing the fleet. So I think that's actually good news. Under building maintenance, they're seeing a 5.1% decrease. There's a need for some reclassification. We have some, of course, we've got some great team members that do some amazing things in our building maintenance. If you don't believe it, come visit me in my office when you can, when we're allowed. They've just done an amazing job of getting space up, refreshed and looking a lot better. So I just, you know, want to thank Rob, Jack and the maintenance team for all that they're doing. But there is a need for some reclassification in that, in that department. We are doing some contract work. It caused a little bit of an increase, paying a little bit more attention to our building equipment, roof systems, that kind of thing. And then we have a decrease that, of course, our building maintenance folks have been remodeling like crazy. Just in 21, there's just, you know, they've, I don't want to say they're completely caught up, but they're, they've caught up to some of the major remodels. And so we'll be concentrating more just on maintenance in 21, so there won't be very many remodel projects. So that's, that's the building maintenance. All right, cap, five-year capital improvement plan. So before we go into that, I actually want to, I think it goes with Jamie's question, Counselor Staley's question about, you know, let's, you know, why aren't we spending more money on the streets? We have looked at, at the five-year capital plan. We've examined it, reexamined it, really spent some time talking to departments about needs and what we need to do. And we felt that it was really important for our community that we not cut all of the capital budgets and put, or capital projects and put them somewhere else. That there was going to be an expectation that we could play a part in helping live, you know, improve livability, capital projects help stimulate the economy. And so as I walk you through these, these capital, these five-year capital improvement projects, I just, you know, it was important for us, we felt that it was important that we continue to fund and do capital projects. So with that, our five-year capital improvement plan, there is totals $191.8 million worth of capital projects. Of course, the largest project is the Rancho Santa Fe Parkway and TI totaling 4.46.5 million dollars. And then of the 191 million, or 192 million, 127 of that is funded for fiscal year 21. And actually, in, in looking at the numbers, and one of the things that we had with the Rancho project is we had 3.5 million funded in fiscal year 22. And in talking with Tina, we're going to roll that 3.5 million into the fiscal year 21. And so that number really is going to equate to 130, just over 130 million for fiscal year 20. So that, that's kind of what the breakout looks like. Of course, we've got some, a very big project at the airport with the draw site cleanup. And right behind those projects are some, you know, some pretty substantial, important sewer and water projects as well. And let's get to them. Same, same graph, just in pie format. And then, of course, we have the projects by funding source. So again, I'll just remind everybody that last year, we reworked the five-year capital plan. Nothing lands in the five-year capital plan that does not have an identified funding source. And we are still maintaining a capital projects needs list. But if, if a funding source has not been identified for those projects, they will remain on that needs list. And that we will only show on the five-year capital plan those projects that actually have identified funding. The Rancho Santa Fe project, this is how that breaks down. Again, I want to point out that we will add the 3.5 million that was shown, that will be shown, you'll see in the slide later, breaking that out into 22. We're just going to put it in 21 for the entire project to be shown in 21. But this is, this is kind of what the project looks like now, the breakdown. Remember, we received the money distribution or will receive $20 million for state participation in the TI project itself. And then we're working with Sunbelt Development on a development agreement where we're doing basically a 50/50 split on the rest of the, the project. And so that's, that's kind of how that breaks down. I think everybody's seen these in the past. We just wanted to just show it, just because it's something that is a big project and a lot of interest. All right, the five-year CIP for the general fund breaks down like, like this. I want, I don't know that I want to go through every single project. I think some of them are self-explanatory, but there's a couple that I want to highlight. The top one, branding, beautification and signage. Over the last couple of years, council priority and citizen survey priority have been for, for having the community look better and be more presentable. And in an effort to do that, what, what, of course, one of the things, of course, that we've been working on is developing a new brand for Kingman. That, that brand will roll out to the, to be presented to the council. I believe our plan is to have it for the 19th. And moving forward, we want to make sure that that brand is carried forward throughout our, our organization and the community. One of the areas that we know, we've talked about in our retreat, and I know we've, I've talked to several of you on an individual basis about, is how do we, how do we improve our entryways into the city? So with this money, what we will, what we will be doing is creating monument signs, welcome signs with our new brand, our new, our new logos on them, welcoming people into the city with little landscaped areas around the monument signs. Obviously, our TIs, the traffic interchanges that we have in our community are huge. And trying to do large-scale improvements of those TIs, we simply just don't have the money for. ADOT will not, will not do it. So what I've noticed around, around the state is that communities haven't tried necessarily to tackle the entire TIs, but they've actually concentrated on nicely landscaped monument signs. And so we feel like that would be a nice addition to all of our entrances off of, or into the city, off of the freeways. The other things that we would love to be able to do is, is additional monument signs that are electronic inside the community, where we have our, our new logo and we have our brand along with messaging for, for residents. And so that's, that's really what that line item envisions. Also, doing some, some banner program on especially Stockton Hill Road. As you, as you come off of the freeway and you come into our, into our commercial corridor, having banners with our new logos on it, welcoming people to our community. Just some of those, those kinds of things where we're rolling out our logo, improving the image and, and really making Kingman presentable for visitors and residents alike. So that's, that's what I wanted to make sure and cover.
Ron, this is Vice Mayor Lingfelter. I just want to take an opportunity to applaud you on that, this concept of monument signs and the branding. In my opinion, it's long overdue. And I can't wait to see monument signs at the entrances to the City of Kingman. I'm just really excited.
Thank you. We're really excited about the project and what we can do. We've, I've had my team, as they travel, send me pictures. I've taken some pictures of ones that I've really liked. And I think we've got some good, good examples of what we can do. You know, eventually I would love to have, you know, I'd love to spread this, I'd love to have all the money in the world, but we would love to have monument signs on both sides when, when you come into the city and when you leave the city. I think we can get there, but at least starting wise, we would like to give this a jumpstart. You can see that over the, the next few fiscal years, we have additional money spread to continue to do this work. But the 21, we have a big portion to try to get as much done as we can. So appreciate that. And I think people are going to love it. So.
I think it's a, in the grand scheme of things, it's a little thing, but it demonstrates, it demonstrates huge community pride. And I love that. Thank you.
You betcha. Oh, sorry, go ahead. I'm sorry.
I just wanted to echo that a little bit. This is so wonderful. And, you know, when we finally finished the Arch project and it had carried on for so long, but it was finally installed, people were so proud, you know? I mean, it really brought the community together and there's a sense of pride. And we're still talking about how beautiful it is and so many pictures underneath it. And so it's so nice to see these things carry on and expand because it's something that cities have all over, but we've just ignored it for so long and we're such a tourism destination. Kingman should be everywhere and we should have more things to give us pride in the wonderful city we live in. So I want to applaud you as well and just say thank you to all the staff that's involved in making this happen because it's, it's all these little things that we just need so desperately. So thank you so much.
You're very welcome. And you're, you're, you're absolutely right. The team has been really great to help on this. So really appreciate that. We talked about the Economic Recovery Program yesterday. That will be reworked into the budgets where it needs to be. And that's, that goes along with the facade improvement program. That grant program will be reworked. I, I did want to cover this ice rink idea. This was a private sector project that they, they would like to raise money for an ice rink similar to what you've seen in Lake Havasu. Don't, we really don't know where that project is or if it's progressing in any way. But in an effort to try to acknowledge that, that they, they were working on this, we left this in the, in the budget. But I, I really don't have any information regarding that at this time, other than just to acknowledge it. The other one that you have heard about in the last year, since we've been doing our Parks Master Plan, is a gym and community center. Did someone have something?
I have, I have a question actually, Ron. This is Vice Mayor Lingfelter. If we could just bounce back a little bit to the ice rink. I was going to ask about the, the funding source under future fiscal years. So that's 100% private for the, for the capital?
Yes.
Is that correct?
Yes.
And then I also see that you're showing an estimate of $330,000 for annual operating expenses. Is the, do you know if the private group, is the city going to be entering any sort of a private agreement to help, to help maintain that?
Well, that number's off by a zero. I appreciate you pointing that out. I didn't even catch it. I think the number's supposed to be 35,000, not.
Oh, okay. Like, holy smokes, that thing is.
Yeah. Yeah, I didn't even notice that.
Manager Fagan?
Yes.
This is Mayor Miles. I, this, this project is very similar to the splash pad. And that our private partners want, want to raise this, all these funds to, and help deliver this, this rink with the expectation that the city would take over the maintenance, just as we have for the, the, for the splash pad. However, I haven't heard recently from the partners either. And so I think with the pandemic, And so I think with the pandemic, you know, some of these things have truly been postponed. I imagine that the, the desire is still there, but it's going to be postponed until such time as it makes sense because again, that's a gathering place. And so we've got to get a little, little further along. And also just the fundraising efforts themselves are important and critical. And so I, I just expect that may not happen in FY21. But I understand why you put it in there.
Yeah.
It can be, it can be taken into future years as we get more information from them.
Yes. Yeah. And again, how, how the deal ends up penciling out to just to finish Vice Mayor Linganfelter's question about ongoing maintenance is certainly something that, that as, as we, as we talk with the group about that we will definitely have a conversation about how, how it looks moving forward after it's built.
Great.
And, and Manager Foggan, there, there is one other aspect to this that's still, I think, under discussion with them is that and the degree of maintenance would be impacted because there is a scenario where that ice rink could be translated into a skating rink during the parts of the year that it's not used as an ice skating rink, which there's a lot. And during our parks focus groups, there was a lot of interest in a skating, a skate rink. So those things are still under consideration. And that number could actually change depending on the versatility of this event center. So, but it's all good. It's just, I think postponed for the pandemic.
Yeah. Again, we haven't heard much about it. So, but we, as we learn more or there's more information, we'll certainly share that with, with, with council.
Yeah. This is Vice Mayor. I think it's a, a cool concept and a cool project. I'm far less concerned with annual maintenance of 33,300.
Yeah, I am too. That, that, yeah. Sorry about that. And, and really what the mayor said about having a year-round activity spot, just every, every time we can add something to our parks, that, that just adds livability that people are looking for when they live here. So thank you for that, Mayor. The multi, the multipurpose gym community center concept, that continues to be a topic that was addressed quite a bit in our public invites to the community when we talked about the Parks Master Plan. So I know there's a number of folks in our community that would love to see us have a community center with, with some nicer amenities in it. And so I don't, I guess I bring that up really specifically because that would require asking the people to bond. Nothing wrong with that. If there's community support for it, then why shouldn't we, why shouldn't we have that? And I think our Parks Master Plan is, it'll be completely not too, too much into the fiscal year 21. And I think you'll see evidence of that in, in that from, from our consultants. Yes.
Would it be possible to tie the sale of our, the city's land at Kingman Crossing to this project? Instead of going to a bond, we have quite a bit of land there at Kingman Crossing and we will be, be able to sell it. The voters already approved selling that land. So as soon as our contract allows us to put that up for sale, couldn't we tie that to building this and then not have to go out for a bond? And then really being able to put that money to good use?
Yeah. I don't think you could actually tie that money down. But when we got to the budget year where that money was available, we certainly could, we could add it to, to the cap. It's already in the capital projects budget and we would just tie that money in that fiscal year to that project.
The reason why I ask is because we look at this dollar figure and say, never going to happen. Right? I mean, that's really how it feels like. That's such a big number. And, and well worth it. The community wants it, but where will we ever get that money? Will a bond pass? But if we're looking at an asset that we have to sell and we'll, and we will sell it, tying that or just even talking about how, you know, these two can work together instead of only focusing on a voter-approved bond, it makes the project feel more doable and, and something really for the community to look forward to.
Yeah. Again, yeah. I mean, as when the sale happens, budgeting for that and, and paying for a portion of it or all of it, I think could, could easily be done. I don't think you could tie it, you can't tie future council hands on that, especially on spending. But you know, it, it looks like a large number, but you know, Bullhead, Bullhead asked their community for $30 million and built their field house. So 10 million sounds a lot cheaper than 30 million.
It does. It really does.
So.
Ron, this is Vice Mayor Linganfelter. I would, I would just echo what Councilman Staley is saying. Once that Kingman Crossing interchange goes in, watch what happens to the valuation of the city's land. The valuation of the citizens' land is going to skyrocket. And when you sell it per acre at that point, what the, what the council could do, you can't tie the hands of a future council, but you could, as a council, pass something that basically dedicates all of the sale proceeds and puts it into a dedicated capital improvement fund.
Yeah, I think.
I mean, we have, we have a dedicated capital improvement fund right now. I mean, you could do something along the same lines to dedicate all of the money that comes from any sale proceeds at the, with the citizens' land after the interchange is, is in and the valuation skyrockets. Any land sale proceeds go into a dedicated capital improvement fund. And then that could really fund maybe not only a community center, but something else as well.
Right.
Thank you.
Yeah, you betcha. All right. We are going to continue to do our playground equipment updates. Those, as you know, those projects have been wildly successful over the last couple of years. We're proposing that we continue that work. It's, it's much needed and I, and I think much appreciated by our community. I, I see folks enjoying those projects that we've done over the last couple of years. So we, of course, continue that. I do want to highlight that we are proposing to add some new pickleball courts to our, our park system. I think we as a community are much overdue. We, we, we have folks that want, want them. And there's push and pull on the tennis courts to have, to have pickleball. So just wanted to point that out. Of course, we're going to continue our work and efforts out at the Sunbelt Sports Park. There's trail development enhancement. We've, we felt like that would needed to continue. So we have $50,000 earmarked for the next five years for continuing to work on trails, trailheads, trail improvements. And of course, we, Mike gave you the presentation on the White Cliffs Trail at last council meeting. You know, we will finally be able to get to that project in 21. I know it's been a long time coming. But it looks, it looks like we'll be there. In public safety, there's building repair at Magnet. And then a really important one is the EOC retrofit and training room improvements at the police department, $150,000. Our, our EOC just really isn't. It, it, it's great space, but it doesn't have the technology pieces that make it functional and usable as we really need it to be. So this would, this would add computer hookup and improve the space to be able to better operate as an emergency operations center. And then of course, we have the fire station number two. If you've driven by, you can see that the work has started on that. I just want to remind everybody of the importance of this project. That Chief Rhodes in his report last, last council meeting indicated that, that we continue to be concerned about employee safety and, and the cancer issue with, with firefighters in particular. And that building really does not give us the ability to get our firefighters away from the diesel exhaust. So this, this remodel is desperately needed to just improve the, the safety of our employees. Local contractors doing the work, we're excited about, about getting that done. It's a, it is a high-profile building that's right on 66. And having it freshened up and improved on the outside isn't going to hurt as, either. Of course, that does include our training tower that Chief Rhodes mentioned in his presentation as well. And as part, again, part of our efforts to remove or protect our, our fire team members and from cancer and that kind of thing. We actually have diesel exhaust systems upgrades for stations as well in this budget. And then finally, a much-needed, it's, you'll hear it referred to as CAD. That's the short for computer-aided dispatch. The current software system that we have is, is, is just terrible. And, and it's a, it's a big ticket item, but it's one of those places where we've got to be able to respond in a timely manner and know that the information is accurate that's being sent to both fire and police. I will point out that this, this is just a high-level bid that was asked for from a company just to give us a feel for what we may be looking at. We will be going through an RFP to identify the best possible CAD system and provider that we possibly can. And we're hoping that it will be much less than the 550,000 shown in this budget. But that, that is one of those things that you just can't script on and you can't afford to have a system that's going to let a call not get out because that, that could cost someone their lives. So. Questions about any of those?
I just had one thing before you move forward. I'd like to request on this form and, and especially anything that gets reprinted for a citizen budget. If we could maybe have a separate color for everything that's funded through grants or like the ice skate rink that's funded through private fundraising so that when you scan through this, you can see like White Cliffs, for example, that's paid for by grant money. And you know, I, I think it's important that citizens can see that we're looking everywhere outside, you know, of just city revenue to pay for these projects. And then not everything is sales tax funds or, you know, some of it's grants, some of it's private and it would just make it easier to scan through.
Okay. Yeah. Good suggestion.
Thank you.
We'll look at how we can present that.
This is Vice Mayor Linganfelter. I think some sort of color coding like that is an excellent idea. I really do. Thank you.
Yeah, you bet. Anything else on this page? All right. Let's talk about the big projects then. So we have the Airway Avenue, Prospector Street, Tarantio Parkway. That's the project that I was referring to that is part of the overall Rancho Santa Fe project. That 3.5 is just going to be moved into fiscal 21 so that all of that money is together. And if, if there's a trigger pulled by, in the project that requires the, the money, that it's all there available to be spent. We, we also, one of the things that you'll see in there, the ADA improvements. A lot of times folks think that that's something that can actually be ignored or that that's, you know, why are we doing that? That's actually a requirement. We have to do, have to show progress with ADA. So it's not like we can just turn a blind eye to it. We know we've got a lot of ADA sidewalk issues that need to be addressed. That's clearly shown in, in our five-year capital plan. But it's just something that we simply cannot ignore. Of course, the downtown streetscape, we, we just talked about that at the council meeting Tuesday. That's to get that streetscape done is in this budget. There's also, we continue to work on Eastern Street. I just remind everybody that Eastern as a complete project is a $10 million project all by itself. Probably a little bit more than that even now based on inflation. But the lower, I guess I'll say the, the north part of Eastern. I don't know if that's the right direction or not. I'm just going to say that down by the railroad tracks, that area, the realignment, taking out the one-way street stuff that's, that's happening with Diamond and down there is really where we're currently concentrating on. And so we have some money that we will be spending over the next couple of years. And we, we are in, we were planning on having the $3 million or 2.9. I'll just round up to $3 million as part of the contribution from our regional transportation folks. That, our money was used for another project elsewhere. And so we got bumped to fiscal year 23. Before you panic, that is not an unusual activity. Projects run over or they have change orders. And so it's not unusual for this to happen. But we are going to get our money in fiscal 23. We, we were hoping for 22, of course, but we're still working in that direction. What else should we highlight here? The I-40 traffic interchange landscaping, again, in our efforts to, to do that beautification. One of the things that have been working with ADOT on is getting some, some decorative rock that would be used in conjunction with our, with our welcome signs in an effort to, to, to make that, that there is beautiful as well. And then we have our pavement preservation. Money falls way short and we've talked about that quite a bit. So any questions on that page?
Ron, this is Vice Mayor Linganfelter. I have a question about the downtown streetscape plan.
Yes.
So in fiscal year 21, we're, we're funding the master plan. What is the timeline for that master plan to be complete?
Rob, you want to, you probably got the document sitting right there. Do you want to just walk everybody through that timeline?
It's, it's right here, but it's buried in the stack of papers. So if you could give me just a minute.
Yeah. Well, the point is to answer the question. So take your time.
Manager Foggan, while he's looking, I just want to make a comment about the term downtown, downtown streetscape. I think that, and I, and I think people don't understand that that's more than just a beautification project.
Oh, yeah. Yeah.
It's a lot more. And, and I think if it were called, you know, there's a lot of, there's all the floodwater engineering and, and a lot of things that go from below the ground up. And, and so maybe if that title was expanded a little bit, streetscape, that engineering and design or whatever, so that people, because I think that's going to be, it's kind of an easy thing. So that people, because I think that's going to be, it's kind of an easy thing to misunderstand. It's not, we're not planting trees. We're, it's a lot.
It's a lot deeper.
It's a lot deeper than that. So just a comment. Thank you.
Yeah, that's good. We can come up with a better description for sure.
Thank you.
Thank you. Did you find it?
Yes, sir. It's a 15 month time period on that contract.
Perfect.
Okay, Ron, my follow up question to that is, I know that we talked, I think it was maybe even last year, going through the fiscal year 20 budget. We talked about, once this plan is completed for design, the city of Kingman right now, we don't have a funding source identified to actually do any construction for the general funded components. I mean, I know that the storm water may have a funding source and some of the other ones may have a funding source. But for the general funded stuff, there is no funding source yet identified. And we talked about, you know, what are our options? And I know that Carl looked into the possibility of at some point going out with or approving a smaller increase or bump to the hotel bed tax, which under statute, I think can be dedicated to tourism efforts and tourism related capital improvements. Is what are your thoughts as far as identifying a funding source to realize this plan?
Yeah, that was one of the topics that we talked about, looking at that as in taking that to the voters. It has been some time since that those rates have been increased. And and having a budget, you know, once the streetscape and master plan is is complete, having some solid numbers and asking the citizens to to take an increase in those specific areas for tourism and tourism related capital improvements would absolutely be appropriate. And I think that would be a really good place to look to have that, those projects done by that kind of money.
Yeah, well, not only will the plan give you actual numbers that you can show to the citizens, but they'll have actual products, projects that they can look at to say, look, this is what, this money, if we approve it, this is exactly what it's going to be funding.
Yeah.
I think that's a really smart idea. Thank you.
Hey, you betcha. Good, good question. Absolutely.
Manager Foggan, I'll just add on to that because during our work session that we had on revenue generation, I think we discussed a number of approaches to fund that those particular improvements. Well, once we get the master plan, and I think once we get it, we'll probably have returned to that discussion to include that, the tax, which I think is a very, you know, very good approach. And but there was also improvement districts and other things that we were discussing at the time. And I imagine we'll have a robust discussion once we know what the actual improvements are.
Absolutely. I mean, that's having, as the vice mayor pointed out, having the product, being able to show people what that product look like, will look like. And then having a discussion again about, you know, how do these get funded? I think everybody will feel a lot better about it when they can say, when we can say, yeah, this looks like this. It will cost this and this is how it can be funded for sure. All right. So moving on, under our five year capital plan for the airport, we have, of course, I've already mentioned the big, big one, which was the draw site cleanup. That happens to be extremely important. We're hoping, of course, we budgeted in 21 for this to start. Just just in case we're able to, we're hoping that that is actually the case. Still no exact timeframe on that. We are continuing to work on a number of grant related projects as as well. The runway, the 321 reconstruction project, we received grant money for. And we got additional grant money in the fact that we had a match for that project. And with the CARES Act, our match was covered, which we're grateful for. The security fence relocation for 69,000. Also, grant, actually, almost all of these are grants for the most part. Tobacco's not, but they really need one. They're borrowing, currently borrowing one from Public Works. So that's kind of what currently the airport looks like. Just as a reminder, we will be wrapping up, we're pretty darn close to wrapping up the park, the airport master plan in fiscal year 20, at the end of fiscal year 21. And again, kind of like the streetscape conversation, having that, having that master plan in place will give us opportunity to write a whole bunch more grants or improvements at the airport. And that, having gone through that master plan, actually gives our projects a lot more credit. They're much more credible with the FAA because we did go through that process. So that is the airport.
Ron, this is Vice Mayor William Felder. I want to take the opportunity to talk about the project called the Three Industrial Park Roads. I know that we're working with Mojave County or trying to to get them to adopt those roads into the county maintenance system. And I just want to say hats off to Bennett Bradley, to Gary Kellogg, to our economic development staff. This project, I believe, is maybe 90% funded through grants. And though this this project would not have happened if it wasn't for the hard work of our staff going above and beyond. And I think if if and when the county adopts these roads into the maintenance system, I believe that all of the roads out at our Kingman Airport Industrial Park will be included in the maintenance system. Is that correct? That's a huge accomplishment. It's been years and years and years.
It is a huge accomplishment and and I really appreciate Bennett and Gary's effort on those. I don't, I don't know if that covers every road out there. There's a couple of little spurs. They're roads and they serve, they serve as roads, they are roads, and they serve some industrial businesses. I don't know if all of those little sections have been or will be adopted as part of that or not.
Sure. Well, at the very least, this project and so many others like it demonstrates the city of Kingman's actions and commitment towards economic development in support of our businesses and our industry that we're welcoming, that we're a good place to do business, that we partner with our industries. And I couldn't be more happy about it. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, I appreciate that. It is real kudos to the team. So thank you for that.
Ron, I talked a little bit yesterday about a project manager. And I'm looking at this and there's a little over $36 million in projects, the draw site, the runway 321, and then taxiway B, design and construction. Is this all on Steve's shoulders to manage these projects?
I would say yes, we have consultants involved as well. So it's it's really a team effort, both with within the organization and our the partners that we have that help us with with managing these grants as well. But yeah, I mean, I mean, Steve's, Steve's job is complex and he's a busy guy for sure.
Do they, do they need a project manager in that department this year?
They didn't ask for one.
Okay. I just, I would hate to see, you know, I mean, if these things could move along faster and more efficiently because we had one person overseeing them, then I think maybe that's something to consider in this year's budget. This isn't, obviously, this isn't council's wheelhouse. This is you and Steve. But this is a lot of money and these are really big projects that are important and they're complex. You know, just because of the grants and FAA and ADOT, everybody involved. I am a little bit concerned that he is being stretched too thin and won't be able to really give full attention to these huge important projects.
Well, I would say that that Gary is extremely good at leading his team. He's got, he's got an amazing team. He added, he added a person this last year. Lisa is part of the team and I would say that it doesn't all, it's not all falling to Steve by himself. He's not an army of one. And I know that Gary's team has been willing to step up and and they all kind of grab onto the rope and pull when needed. And I would say that we, with these grants, the draw site cleanup, for instance, I don't know that we have a lot of say in that. There's certainly, that cleanup really will be managed more by the federal government than by our team, other than just to provide support or, you know, help where we can. So the biggest project will probably require the least amount of of management or oversight from us. But yeah, I mean, we will monitor. And if Gary and Steve and the team feel like they're being overrun or that they can't be efficient and effective or that something's going to slip between our fingers because we don't have enough hands, we definitely, we will, we will not be shy about asking for personnel.
Okay, thank you.
Ron, if it helps, also Kaufman provides oversight for the big projects. So, you know, we monitor and look at what Kaufman does, but, you know, we would certainly say uncle if it came to that.
Yeah.
Thank you, Gary.
Yeah.
Ron, this is Vice Mayor Felder. I would just say in support of your comments and councillor Staley's comments that Steve, hopefully, I mean, he has the support of internal services at the organization with finance and IT and HR. And we didn't hire them to be construction project managers, hopefully that they would get assistance from either engineering or somebody that does project management, or we would contract it out to make sure that we're well served. You can't do anything that they're not hired to do. So.
Yep, exactly right. All right, we've covered solid waste already, so I'm not going to spend a lot of time there. On the storm water side, of course, we've talked about the need for storm water, dedicated storm water revenue. Of course, nothing lands in the five year capital improvement plan until it has funding. So all of these projects that you currently see do have, they do have funding. There, I don't know that there's any particular one that needs to be highlighted. They're, they're, they're all designed to get water moving and past our commercial businesses and past our residential areas. So unless there's a particular interest in any one of them, I didn't have one that was of particular super interest. I will point out, as we've been talking about grant funded ones, the Eighth Street Underpass Drainage was, is a grant funded project. And of course, we can, we continue to work on our storm water rain study. All right, under wastewater, we have some really big projects in here. These are all very important projects. The one that, or the couple that I want to highlight, of course, the diagonal wash interceptor. This is a project that we have talked about. This project takes the sewer and runs it under Route 66, under the railroad tracks and brings it out to the east bench as part of our effort to try to help the sewer infrastructure move forward on the east bench. That, that project I think will be extremely helpful as, as, as part of our Sunbelt development. The, and that we've, of course, we've been working on the Sunbelt Development Agreement. And what Bill Lindhart and his team are working on, this will certainly be a great help on that side of the city. The other project, I know we have, we have talked about in the past is the, what is known as the downtown sewer outfall line relocation. This project is our main line out to our sewer plant. It, this line has been damaged over multiple times over the last several years with regards to monsoon season and runoff, washouts. And so in an effort to avoid penalties, future penalties, breaks, penalties from DEQ and the EPA on how we're taking care of our sewer to our sewer plant. This project continues to be in a very important project that is, that we, that we carry out. Both very big projects, both very, very important. The other one, of course, one that we've been working on for some time now is the reclaimed water. Oh, that's not good. Hold on. Sorry about that. Forgot to silence my phone. Sorry. And that is the injection well out at our, out at the wastewater treatment plant. We should finish that project up in 2021. Injecting anywhere from a million gallons a day to 1.5 million gallons a day back into the aquifer for aquifer recharge. I know that's, that's, that has been an important project and it's one that we're excited to have wrapping up in 21. Another project, really important project is, I just want to point out, is system repair and replacement. The one thing that we, that we may have not stayed up on as much as we needed to is taking care of our storage tanks. And so this, this in 21, we will be doing work to make sure that our law, our storage tanks are in good working order and are repaired appropriately. So those are kind of the highlights. Oh, wastewater, I'm sorry. Rob, I'm sorry, on a different subject. Rob, do you want to cover what your, your plan is for the system repair and replacement? I messed that one up. I apologize.
Yes, sir. That's, oh, that's other video. Those have been treatment plant upgrades?
It was the system repair and replacement line, Adam, for 900,000.
Yeah, I think that title might have changed. If you could give me just a minute.
Sure. Do you know what that is, Tina?
Yeah, so we will wastewater infiltration, slip line, slip lining.
Oh, okay. Rob, we got it. I'm sorry. Tina, Tina's whispering in my ear. So that, for the sewer side, it is, we basically have combined all of our repair, slip lining, our efforts to keep water running in to the system. We have several areas of town where we absolutely need to get on top of this. And we're treating water. And we're, we're treating water in our sewer system that doesn't need to be treated by light when it runs in, you know, during rainstorms and that kind of thing. So, over time, the more we spend here, the more we save in treating water. So, that's our effort there. And then, that needs to continue on into the, at least into the future as far as we can see, making sure that we're staying on top of those older lines. The, what's, what's wonderful about this slip lining or the SOC, when you put a SOC into these lines, is that you basically take and PVP line them and you get another 20, 25, 30 years out of a sewer line. So, not only are you saving money now, but well into the future on replacement costs. So, that's that line. Any questions about sewer? Okay. Water, okay. Now, talk about water. Thank heavens. In our, again, we have some, several really, I will say, bigger projects in the water department that are, and that are, that we need to highlight. One of them is, I know that it's been talked about off and on for a number of years, but the automated meter reading system. This is a system that would allow the meters to be read and report to computers instead of having to be manually read. We, we have looked at how and kind of ways in which we can roll out this system and just kind of based on where our cash flows are. It just seems like we're, we're going to have to do this in multiple phases. So, what we're going to do is just try to tackle $300,000 worth of this project every year, getting the system turned over to automated meter reading. Another very, very important project is Citywell 10. And getting that equipped and having that online for, especially for summertime use needs. And then, you know, distribution lines continue to be something that we, you know, can no longer ignore as, as we're, we're spending more and more time and money on, on repairs to breaks. So, that distribution line, replacement line item is a big line item. It's a big number, but extremely important that we get on top of that. And we've got some areas of town that we'll, that we're going, having to go back multiple times to repair breaks on. The water loss, along with the, just being, that being inefficient, needs to be fixed. We have, yes?
So, on this $3 million project, a couple of years ago, we had this horrific presentation to the council where it showed we needed like 70-plus million dollars in repairs to our underground water infrastructure, our water line infrastructure. Is this starting to chip away at what that presentation was covering?
Well, I'm not familiar with the presentation, but I'll let Greg Henry answer your question since he probably presented it.
Good morning, good everyone, Mayor and Council. That was a presentation from Sunrise Engineering on our master plan. And I believe most of that was in the North Kingman Butler area. It was like $50 million to bring all the water lines up to code there and add fire hydrants. There's no fire protection out there. That was the brunt of that presentation. The 3 million, I, it does not include any projects specific to that area. These are ones that were prioritized with our public works staff and includes some area, some main lines there, but certainly not the entire system that would, that will bring that up to, up to code. And these are lines mostly within the city limits that have been leaking and are undersized and breaking a lot. There's been a lot of leaks on the lines that we're looking to do here.
Okay. I, I think that that presentation covered, I mean, the, the map that we looked at, they were water lines within the city limits as well. So, so this is really just tackling broken or water lines within the city limits then that are failing or are going to fail. Is that right?
That's it, yeah. There, it's the priority list that Public Works is going to come up with, based on leaks.
Okay, thank you.
If I could jump in, this is Rob. Most of these lines are in the Birdland area, Mallard, Lum, some of those. And these are areas where we have a lot of leaks, a lot of issues. So, this will be replacing some of our problem water lines in that area.
Okay, thank you.
And I will say that one of our, one of our goals that we have set, our performance measurement that Rob and his team have set, is to reduce or make our water system more efficient and, and not have water loss. As, and so, you know, with the meter, the automated meter reading, the distribution line fixes, these are, these are steps that, that we're recommending to basically reduce our, our water loss within our system and think that we'll see some pretty good results from that, from those efforts. The other really big project in here is the main tank transmission. This is the phase two portion of that project at 3.8 million. Rob, Greg, did you want to speak to that one really quick?
Sure, let me, let me jump in on that. So, Friday Construction has just completed, this has been a phased project. Start, it basically brings a transmission line from the booster station at Castle Rock and Gordon and provides dedicated transmission to the main tank site. And we've got it, at this point, we've got it from Castle Rock and Gordon all the way to Stockton Hill Road. Last year, when we did the Stockton Hill paving project, we replaced the water line in Stockton. And we pay, and we, we placed a portion of this under Stockton Hill Road, so we don't have to go cut Stockton Hill Road. So, then this next phase will pick up on the west side of Stockton Hill Road, bring the, the transmission line, mostly following Anson Smith Road right away to get to the, the, the main tank site there. The reason we like a dedicated transmission line is when the pumps turn on and off, they create, they create a pressure wave in the, in the water pipes that has been problematic for the city as well as for some of the residents. So, this should solve that problem. The existing line that feeds those tanks now will remain in place as a distribution line. So, this is, it's, it's been a multi-phase project for several years now. And we just, Friday Construction, just this week, completed the, the phase that brings it all the way to Stockton Hill Road, so.
Thank you, Greg. And then, the project that I was talking about earlier is the one that's on the page now, is the, the storage tank restoration for $900,000. This will evaluate and provide repairs to our, our water storage tanks that are absolutely vital to make sure that, that they continue to be usable and functional, obviously. Our, our water storage tanks make it possible for us to really provide the water consistently 24/365. So, that, that is extremely important to our system as well.
Mr. Foggan?
Yes, Mayor.
One that, that you didn't mention, but I think it's worth mentioning, is the Sacramento Valley well sighting study.
Yes.
Because that has such important long-term ramifications for the water supply in Kingman. And I'm just really glad that, that we are locating well sites that are in, in the Sacramento basin that, that can ultimately be possible water sources for our city and to increase our use of water so that we're not dependent on just any one aquifer. So, I'm really glad to see that being done. I think it's, has very long-term importance.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Appreciate you pointing that one out. Absolutely, that, that one's extremely important. Any other questions about the water?
Ron, I have just a couple of questions. This is Vice Mayor Lingefelter. Could you or your staff speak a little bit on the source water protection plan and also on the funding for implementation of stormwater recharge projects? First one's on page 177, second one is on page 79.
Yeah. Rob, Greg, who wants to take those?
Well, I can, this is Rob, and I can talk about the source water protection plan. So, this is all recommendation from American Water Right Works Association that every system has a stormwater, or I'm sorry, a source water protection plan. It deals with potential contamination of underground source water and ways to mitigate that. It shows where you may have potential issues in the future and gives mitigation, mitigation measures to ensure that that's, source water does not become contaminated. So, that's kind of what that plan's about.
Funding-wise, we're just going to pay for it?
Yes, sir. That would just be paid out of the water fund.
With, with our Colorado, the Colorado water money that was paid by Bullhead last year?
Yeah, that was a good, it's a good project. I just wanted to call it out. And then, if you could just talk a little bit about the stormwater recharge projects that are going to be implemented, the funding. I think we're putting $100,000 in fiscal year '21?
Yep, that's right. Rob, Greg, you want to speak to that?
Well, this, and Rob, jump in if, if I'm off base here, but I think the $100,000 that's planned for the USGS Aquifer Monitoring Program on page 179 is, is just to complete the, the study that, the joint study between the city and county for the updated water ground model that is only in place.
It's on the reclaimed water recharge, right?
Did I misunderstand? I heard page 179.
I'm looking at 179, page 179. The project title is USGS Aquifer Monitor Program?
I misheard you, I apologize.
And then, in the, in the project description, the reason I thought it was for, for implementation is the last sentence of the project description says, "Funding is for implementation of stormwater recharge projects." But the model is, is incredibly important to the city's future efforts as well. That's what it's for.
Yes. Perhaps we could move up to the dry well installation? That actually, I believe, would be more for funding of stormwater recharge. So, this is the first time, I think, this line item has been on, has been on our capital plan, but we're hoping to get a couple sample dry well installations at some of the existing detention basins around the city that have been holding water typically longer than, than what they're intended to hold. And that, we're hoping to get at least a couple and hopefully maybe up to three dry wells installed at some of the existing basins around town. So, that will, that will definitely help stormwater infiltration.
And this is Rob.
Is that during fiscal year '21 for those dry wells?
Yes, sir.
Oh, that's, that's excellent news. Thank you.
And this is Rob, and on the USGS study, I think we had rolled that money into '21. I think originally it was supposed to be completed in '20, but I was unsure with all the current events if that would happen. So, that $100,000 was rolled over in case that study had been delayed and we needed to make payments, our final payments on that in fiscal year '21.
That's perfect. Thank you, guys.
Any other questions? All right, thank you for those. So, as, as I indicated at the beginning of our discussion about capital projects, our future projects list looks like this. We're going to continue to, to keep this fresh and updated. But like I said, if, if we have funding sources that, or we have projects without funding sources, they're going to continue to appear on this list. And as we find grant opportunities, as we move forward with our, our master plan or some kind of fees, and we can pull these things off, we will absolutely do that. Just, as, just want to remind everybody that we're, we're happy to, to talk about revenue sources, want to talk about revenue sources because that helps us get these things off of this list and onto the five-year capital projects list. The, we talked about impact fees yesterday. There are several projects on here that would come off with impact fees. Clearly, on, on the stormwater, there will be a number of these projects that come off of the stormwater plan or off of this list when we get a plan in place for rates for stormwater. So, we, we continue to, to keep, departments are updating these numbers and keeping them fresh as I indicated. And I didn't realize that was my last slide. That's, that's, that's what, that, that is the 2021 budget recommended with the five-year capital plan review. Mayor?
Thank you. I was trying to unmute. Wow, thank you. I, I just have a few comments. One, of course, thank you and all of the staff. I know that, that worked with you to create this budget. I think it is wonderful to have a viable, balanced budget as we go into this year under extreme circumstances. I also want to, pardon? I also want to mention that it, that I like the budget book and in terms of, I like how everything, this is a synthesis, but if people want to look at the budget book, they'll see the complete picture of how we started with the strategic planning process and everything that is spent is linked to the goals and objectives of the city and the strategic objectives that the council set. I really like that, that approach. And, and then, of course, we know that the citizens' budget will come out and that will really condense it and streamline it for those that just want to say, "Okay, here's a quick look at how the city is spending everybody's money." So, many kudos to everyone and, and thank you and appreciate it. And I think we have a good working document here and a good working strategy. So, I would also mention that I noticed the total unfunded projects is now at 105, was it 105 million? And for several years, we were saying, we've got over 100,000, $100 million of unfunded projects. And we still do, and it's rising. And some of them are so desperately needed. But with what we have to work with, this is great. I love it. And I just thank you all very much. Are there any other comments, council comments? Go ahead, go ahead. Counselor Staley?
I, I wanted to ask if Ron, I kind of, I'm going to put you on the spot, but I'm wondering if you would be willing to do a city video with budget highlights and to, to talk about the streets again and, you know, just a quick video that we could share on Facebook and put on our website for the citizens that don't want to go through the entire budget but want to better understand what our finances look like, what we're doing this year with, with COVID-19 and the recession. So, so that we can really reach people, they can better, they, they can have a better grasp of, of what the budget looks like. I guess that's the answer.
Counselor Scott Staley, Mr. Foggan was disconnected. He's working on reconnecting right now.
Okay. Maybe we could let others make their comments and I'll put him on the spot when he comes back.
Hey, Vice Mayor, please go ahead.
Thank you. You know, all I was going to say was, I also like the, the budget book this year. I liked how they are, have started to incorporate annual performance metrics and measures, which I know that's important to all of us and also to the city, citizens as well. I think the budget reflects the priorities of the community. I think that when you look at it, it reflects economic development and investment in infrastructure that is going to help our community to create the conditions necessary for industry retention, expansion, attraction and, and the creation of new private payroll jobs. Public pride with the, the entryways into our city is a great thing. There's money in there for open space, parks and trails, which we live in a wonderful place with outdoor amenities. And so it's great that we're investing in those and also the water sustainability. There's a clear, a clear investment into water sustainability with all the studies that are doing, the water model that we're partnered on, the installation of dry wells, which that was the first time I had heard of that this morning. We're going to be installing two or three dry wells this year, which is phenomenal. All of it together, I think it just shows the right priorities, I think, right now. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. And the dry wells really are exciting to me also. And we've, we've talked about them a little bit in council, but I hadn't noticed them in the budget until this morning. But we, we've also discussed having them integrated into development standards and as we move forward. So I look forward to hearing more about them in the community as all of us learn more about them. Because as I think it was Mr. Henry said, sometimes the water doesn't perk fast enough. It just, to really get back down into the aquifer and dry wells are just a great way and not as expensive as an injection well, but they help get it down into the ground. So thank you, Mr. Henry from, I think it, it was you, right, that pointed that out? I, I just am real excited. Thank you. Any other comments?
On the, on the issue, just to follow with you, Mayor, not just as an elected representative for city, but as a citizen, it just gives me a sense of confidence and a little bit of reassurance to see that the city is exploring wells in the Sacramento aquifer, that we're looking at water recharge, that we're looking at sustainability projects, looking at dry wells, all these things. If water is a concern of mine, which it is, to see all this effort and this work, it gives me a sense of confidence that we're going to be all right.
Thank you. I, and, and one thing I hope that, that all of us take away from this discussion and this budget is that in, in spite of a struggle that we know is going on with this global pandemic, the city has not lost sight of short and long-term objectives. And realizing that we will return from this, and I, and I do believe we will return stronger because we have honed our priorities. We know what they are and we keep our focus on them. And I think that is, that, that serves us all well. So I really appreciate all the thought that went into creating this budget and everybody's part.
We, we, we should have paid our, our internet bill.
Welcome back, Manager Foggan.
Thank you. I, 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 we, I was able to get back on right when the Vice Mayor started speaking. I appreciate those thoughts and, and yours as well. I, I, I have to give all the credit to my, my wonderful team, Tina and Melissa for putting this all together and for the leadership folks for all that they do to not only get their jobs done, but to pay attention to what those highlights or expectations are from the community and the council.
Thank you. And thank you for your leadership, Manager Foggan. Appreciate it very much. So is there any further discussion wanted by any of the council members or from any members of, or from you, Manager Foggan? Hearing none, then I will adjourn this meeting. And thank you all so much for your participation.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Thanks.